Monday, January 23rd, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a somewhat light agenda tonight. But before we get into anything, we have some guests in the house, and I'm going to let them come up. Senator Camilleri, welcome.
Good to see you. Thanks for having me. Sorry for just popping in, but I have a free slot in my schedule, so I figured you have your public meeting. I should just come say hello. It's been quite a while since I've been able to be here at an in-person meeting. So, thank you all for all your hard work. I know that Grozila has had its fair share of challenges over the last couple of years, and I know that you all are leading with integrity and doing the best you can to, even through differences, and I know that there's always going to be those local differences, you all are working through some local problems, and I'm excited to be part of some of those solutions going forward. So, I want to give you a couple of quick updates from my office and some of the things that I've been already working on as we've started in this new term. First, a couple of the big policy items that we've been championing. First is the earned income tax credit expansion, or the working families' tax cut that we've been talking about in Lansing for some time, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to actually see some movement on it coming up. In the last 15 years, we actually saw a reduction in that tax credit. This is a tax credit that specifically targets people who make under certain thresholds. And so, in this new iteration that we're discussing, it would be families that make $60,000 and less, and then individuals, that number decreases a little bit as well. But the current rate is 6% on the federal tax credit, so it's mirroring a federal program. We want to move it from 6% to 30%, so five times that value. For a family under that $60,000 threshold, that's $3,000 in their pocket. That would come in the form of a rebate. So, that's the first thing that we're really excited about pushing. If we can actually negotiate and finalize the legislation soon, which is my hope, I'll have a more detailed analysis of what that credit will look like for a lot of people. The second thing that I know will be of a lot of interest for Grozila residents is a repeal of the pension tax. And so, that's something that I know was incredibly unpopular during the implementation of it 12 years ago. We are going to repeal it. I will say that pretty definitively right now. We are going to repeal the pension tax. Now, what that repeal looks like, it might be a phase-in, and might be, and phase-in over time, not necessarily phase-in over income, but we're going to repeal that instituted tax under Governor Snyder. We're just trying to figure out the details of that timeline. So, be on the lookout. Once we come through this negotiation, hopefully in the coming weeks, we'll have an answer on that as well. Very excited about it. Those are two things that I've been championing for quite some time, and I'm excited to be able to make some progress on those two fronts. Third, as you all know, we have a surplus in the state of Michigan. So, even though we are going to be giving some of that money back in the form of the pension tax and the earned income tax credit, we are still going to have money on the books. Right now, that balance is $9 billion. It is a historic surplus. But we have two key points that I want to just mention. There is a possibility of a recession coming soon. All the economists at the state of Michigan forecast that it could happen. We're still in this sort of waiting zone to see if we've made a soft landing or not. And if it does happen, we want to make sure that we are weathering the storm and that we have enough money to still continue operating in the ways that we need to operate. I am confident that regardless of the economic situation, we will be in good financial footing. Second, as part of that billion-dollar surplus, several billion-dollar surplus, we still need to prioritize infrastructure funding. As we all know, infrastructure is one of the biggest challenges that we face across Downriver, whether it's the bridge, you know, the main bridge, or the inland bridges. We have to send some more money to all of you at the local level to figure out some of these challenges. I would love, in addition to obviously the big Grozila Bridge, that list of priorities that we'd like to see implemented. So, if there are projects that you have supervisor that you'd like to prioritize, or things that are go-betweens with Wayne County that I could try to find some money for, please let me know. That is something that's on my agenda. I am going to be requesting a significant sum of money for the Grozila Bridge, the big bridge, and that's something that is going to be in my big set of requests, and something I will be fighting for, because it is actually a request of Wayne County's as well. And so, if we can get some of that money, great. We'll be able to do some more of those peers, which I'm very excited about that opportunity. And then, talk about this long-term strategy with the bridge itself. And so, I look forward to some of those conversations. And then, third, I'm very excited to be the new chairman of the pre-K through 12 school budget. And so, as you all know, we have the premier set of school districts across Downriver, including right here in Grozila. I look forward to strengthening public schools and making sure that all of our students have equal opportunities across the board. I think that there, I've been talking to the superintendent here, and there are some specific challenges to Grozila Public Schools around, you know, you are an island community. It doesn't get treated the same as other island communities across Michigan. So, I'm looking to figure out how to increase some of those revenues that we're not, so that we're maintaining resources or increasing resources to the island and being thoughtful about how we utilize some of those dollars. So, there's a lot that we are going to continue to do, and I'm excited about even just starting in these first couple of weeks. I've been yearning for this chance, to be honest, to be able to govern, to be able to solve common sense problems that most people agree with anyways. Like, I cannot find a, you know, if I were to present this to a group of people who maybe didn't even vote for me, I think that they'd say, "Yeah, I agree with all three of those issues too," right? And that's the point of the way that we are trying to lead. We're not trying to be partisan one way or the other. We're just literally trying to solve a problem that we think has been in the backlog for some time. So, I look forward to serving, to learning, to leading, to being part of the conversation with all of you. My last point, happy to take a couple of questions if you have any to, but we are opening a district office from my team at Trenton City Hall. And so, if residents will, we have not finalized the dates or any of that stuff yet, but once we have that information, we will send it along. You'll be able to follow along any information from my office at senatorcamilleri.com. And just stay tuned. So, I'm looking forward to that. We're doing a town hall coming up soon as well, and then we'll be announcing our regular coffee hours coming up. So, lots of opportunities for engagement. If any of you or any residents have an issue or a concern, you can email Darren Camilleri at senate.michigan.gov, or just show up at our office, and we'll be able to help you out in the best way that we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Anybody on the board have a question? Do you mind if I open it? We don't have that many people here. I don't know if anybody in the audience has a question for the senator.
Thank you for asking, Senator. We would appreciate it if you focus on the infrastructure money, though. You drive forward the queen coming down on the island. You know our situation.
Sure do.
Jim, I just have one comment, if, just real quick. Darren, I just want to thank you. I know that a few years back, we talked about some issues, these issues, and there were reasons why they were blocked and not, I don't want to say from your side, if you will, but it's true. And I just want to thank you for continuing it, and I look forward to seeing some changes. Thanks.
Look forward to working with you. I'll give you a call.
Sounds good.
We, I, you know, last meeting, we talked about the funding going to our water treatment plant. I know you supported that with Congresswoman Dingell, and I just want to say how important that's going to be for the taxpayers of Grozila. So, I'm really grateful for the support you gave to that.
Use the train cameras every day.
And on that note, actually, it reminds me, so the Allen Road Great Separation Project is still in motion, even though it's been a long and winding process. I just got an update this week from Eagle. Eagle has been sort of our holding pattern right now. If any of you remember, the Allen Road Bridge over the Brownstown Creek was closed for like three years, and part of it was held up because of Eagle and some environmental concerns. We're sort of in a similar situation with this project. We all know that it is a nightmare to navigate that area as it is, then layer in wetlands and an oil field and like all this other stuff that's going on in that region. It's made it unbelievably complicated. And so, Eagle had to send over, after a request from Wayne County, to increase the potential bridge five feet, which is a lot, and it sort of slowed down a little bit of this process, to be very honest with you. Eagle sent over a team of their specialists to come to our district, and they basically took that new proposal, and they determined on a Saturday that if they could actually implement some of the changes that they wanted to make or not. And this was in the fall. They did this. I am now waiting on the report from that scout, that field visit. And once we get that report issued, they'll be able to determine the permit status. That's all we're waiting on, is a permit. Once this is issued, we'll be able to go out to bid and start the project itself. All the money is still there. All the commitment from Wayne County, the city of Woodhaven, as well as the state of Michigan, is still there. It has just become an unbelievably complicated process, but that's okay, right? As long as we can get this permit issued and start moving, we'll be able to start the project and get that going. So, I've talked enough, but if you have any questions for me, please reach out anytime.
Thanks, Darren. Appreciate it. Also in the audience, we have a representative from Congressman Dingell, the Congresswoman Dingell's office. Cal Kirchert.
Yes. Tough act to follow. Tall gentleman, yes. Well, it is tough act to follow. Just on a brief aside, I'm here representing Congresswoman Dingell, but as the son of an MEA teacher, I do want to thank Senator Camilleri for all the hard work that you are doing. And we're right there with you, obviously, so thank you, and hopefully our staffs can stay close. I'm here to hear updates from you all, and to introduce myself, I'm Cal. I work for Congresswoman Dingell, as I stated, and I had the pleasure of meeting a few of you the other day with, at the water treatment plant. Really excited with that and also the work that we can do in the future. I know that there's some projects that Derek was speaking about over lunch. I really would like to dig further into those and get updates to the Congresswoman. So, I'd like to extend my contact information to you all and hope to get yours too. And hopefully, we can have coffee or lunch soon. Thank you so much.
And he'll be picking up the bill. Thanks, Cal.
To be sure I'm complying with ethics rules.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thanks, Cal. All right, on to the meeting. Additions, deletions.
Nothing here.
Nothing? Okay. Then, a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment on agenda items? And who's in the back there? Can you, is that Kathy? Kathy, of course, hiding behind the podium. No, we do. An agenda item?
Greg Carmazin, taxpayer homeowner 21228 East River Road. I would like to applaud the board for the study session that you had to discuss recording and broadcasting meetings and also commission meetings as well. I think it is vitally important for transparency and accountability to record and broadcast as many public meetings of the township as possible, whether they're township board meetings or commission meetings. I think a lot of people want to be here. They have a lot of reasons why they can't be here, and oftentimes, the only time they can get information about what happens here is through the recordings that are broadcast on the various platforms the township has. Specifically about, I know there was discussion about the difficulty sometimes that's involved in scheduling of this boardroom, because this is where you're broadcasting out. I would just mention that, you know, there are other options. You could use a recording device, like, in fact, there's a resident here, Kevin Flavin, who's diligently recorded a number of his study sessions that haven't been recorded and broadcast, and the Grozila Civic Association has posted them on the YouTube page, and that's worked out great, and that's free. That's no cost. Now, the township could use the same technology with virtually no cost. If it was an issue of scheduling where there were, you know, a commission, two commissions meeting the same night, and you couldn't use this room, you can use a handheld recorder and basically accomplish the same thing. And I would also say, in that same vein, you know, if there's a concern about televised, or, you know, the video, the imagery that comes when you're video recording, I mean, I think a somewhat acceptable option is audio recordings. Many people are used to podcasts, and, you know, podcasts are used in government and business routinely to record, you know, events and, you know, programs and activities. And I think that would be, again, a very low-cost solution if there is an issue about, you know, cost for broadcasting. There was some discussion in the study session about hybrid meetings. You know, I fully support hybrid meetings. I think that's, it's, you know, a great option for busy people that are, or people that have health issues and...
30 seconds.
Okay. And I would just say that I think in terms of the cost, it was identified as $10,000. You have a grant that came from the federal government, the state government, that totals about almost $1 million. That money was specifically designed to fund projects like hybrid, technology for hybrid meetings. So, I would say you have the money, get it done. Let's put Grozila on the path to being as transparent and accountable as we possibly can. Let's be a leader, not a, you know, lagging behind everyone else. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Kevin Flavin, Park Lane. Thank you to everybody for discussing, putting the meetings on video and sound. I think the members of the DDA who have businesses on Macomb probably would welcome advertisement or the opportunity to talk about and promote their street and their businesses. And the town hall, or the town square, is an electronic town square today, and many, many people cannot be at the town square, so let's make it easy for them to use the electronic town square. Thank you.
Anyone else? Nope. Okay, moving on, consent agenda. Mr. Nady.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda 22-067, which consists of the following: minutes of the January 9th, 2023, 2023 regular meeting, check registers dated through January 13th, 2023, and downtown development authority appointment.
Support?
Second.
Hey, any questions about those? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve Consent Agenda 22-067, which consists of the minutes of the January 9th, 2023 regular meeting, check register dated through January 13th, 2023, and an appointment to the Downtown Development Authority. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Which brings us, we have no action items. Brings us back to public comment. See none? Yep. Yeah, we have no action items. Yeah?
Bob Z Blauvelt. During the January 9th board meeting, I made reference to a statement that Mr. Bletcher made during the November 14th board meeting. Mr. Bletcher stated that there's not a shortage of police officers right now. Although Mr. Bletcher's statement was direct and succinct, he stated that it was misunderstood. He then stated that he was not against having 24 person on the roster for the police department, and proceeded to focus on how he felt that the police officer was not as qualified as the volunteer fire department personnel in the field of rescue. Let me reiterate that the police officer is trained in all basic life and death emergency technique. That first responder, 95% of the time, is already on the road, receiving the call from dispatch and en route to the location, en route with the lifesaving equipment and necessary training to address the situation, whether it be crime, fire, or rescue. That police officer, our first responder, they are first to address a child that may be choking, a person that may be bleeding to death, or even someone whose heart that may have stopped. Remember, saving a life may belong to the first response who arrives on the scene, and that is our police officer, our first responder. Mr. Bletcher also commented on the unique business model. Again, let me remind you that that business model is built around having a volunteer fire department. So, Mr. Bletcher, unless you have $4 million laying around to put in a permanent staff fire and rescue department on location 24 hours around the clock, that first responder is still our police officer. Mr. Bletcher then stated that there is a volunteer fire department person within half mile of every home. Even if that was true, we must remember that all of the fire department staff can't answer every call, and that person isn't running out of his house or her house with necessary lifesaving equipment. The first one on the scene with the lifesaving equipment, 95% of the time, is our police officer, our first responder. It doesn't make any difference if it's 12 noon, 12 midnight, if there's a crime wave going on. The issue is who's going to get there first in a 10-square-mile area with the necessary equipment and training to save a life? Again, our police officer, first responder. Mr. Bletcher's closing statement was that if I have a medical emergency, I'm looking for the fire department. You may want to put a little more thought in that statement, Mr. Bletcher. There is one statement that Mr. Bletcher made that we...
30 seconds, Bob.
...all agree on. That is that the voters should be allowed to decide the service they want and expect from the police department, a police department that won an award with 24 people on the roster eight years in a row. Mr. Bletcher, I would hope that you would be true to your statement and support the entire board in getting the police department roster back to 24 personnel by promoting that additional millage on the ballot this year, so that we can get our police department back to full strength. Any comments from the board?
I know it's not question and answer. You can comment. Will. If they have any, they will.
Well, you just had your opportunity.
No, they have their opportunity at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, well, as for those who want to stay, then our party...
Kathy, please step forward. Are you limping?
Yeah. Kathy Walker, 26051 Thorpe Court. The reason I'm up here is kind of, from what I hear from Bob, I'm concerned, because, you know, I'm all about safety, and I want to see the 24 people here. I don't care if there's a millage. That's one I will vote for. Because when they say about the firemen or women can come quickly, well, they have a right to turn down when they're called. My understanding is, and I got this from one of the trustees, a previous trustee, that they can turn down. So, as your guys are calling, and the guy turns it down, they go to the next one, somebody could be dying. So, the police are the first ones there. We need the police. The firemen are wonderful, but I know that the police are on the job. Where the firemen, you have to call and ask. So, I would appreciate that. So, just again, please bring back the 24. That's what people want. That's what they voted for. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Kevin Flavin, Park Lane. Regarding what Bob Zalasko, his presentation this evening, I too support getting that first responder, police officer, on the roster as soon as possible. And the concept of the public comment that used to be at the end of the meeting and is now in the middle of the meeting, I think it's unfair to the public not to be able to hear the whole meeting before they come up and make a comment. I think they should be able to hear everything and make a comment. And even though it's been said by Mr. Budney that this is the board's meeting, I think it really should be reframed, this is the taxpayers' meeting, and we are, you are doing the taxpayers' business. So, it only makes sense that we should be able to hear the whole meeting and make a comment. One of the things that was on the agenda this evening was the sale of the cell towers, the community-owned cell towers. And I have been asking for over a year that a communication commission that had disappeared when we had a budget problem with the police, the police union, when the legal fees were needed to be paid, the commission disappeared or seemed to disappear at the same time. I think it's a good idea that we have a communication commission to discuss the sale of the towers and what that means to the community. of the towers and what that means to the community. And there are other towers that are owned by other folks on the island, and it might be a good idea to put those, know where all of those towers are. And it doesn't make sense to me that you sell an asset that, an asset that's so valuable without more public input. The Presbyterian Church has a tower, and they have a committee in their-
Thirty seconds.
They have a committee in their church that discusses just this topic, and I'm sure that there are people that could be helpful to making a decision like that. Thank you.
Hey. Anybody else? Oh.
Greg Carmes in East River. Just wanted to follow up. I fully support the comments that were made by Kevin Flavin, Bob Zalasko, and Kathy Walker. I think it's vitally important that we have the necessary police on, to have the personnel to have three responders, three cars on patrol for all shifts. And that's really what the heart of this is, is a discussion about what our response time is. I know we have a former police chief on the board. Trustee Porcelli was chief here for a long time. I've had discussions with him, I've had discussions with the police commission. Bob, Kevin, and I were all, attended the police commission meeting last week, and we talked with the command staff and the members of the commission. And I think that, you know, the public needs to understand what the issue is. The issue is response time. You have a, you have a large area with 10 miles long, you know, several miles wide at its widest point, and at any given time, if you've got a 911 call and you've got two cars on one end of the island, and you only have two cars on the road, it could be quite a while before a emergency response comes if you don't have that third car on the road. So I think it really is important. We've had a standard, as I understand it, of three to five minutes as a response time. That was calculated with having the most, calculated for the most prominent and common types of emergencies in the community, and a lot of thought process went into that. There was a five-year planning process that the commission went through twice, I believe, and they came up with a formula that was based on a national best practice, best standard to some, to some extent. And, you know, that is where these numbers come from. They're not, they're not brought out of thin air, there's a lot of thought process behind it. I know it costs money, and it is something that has to obviously be weighed with all the needs of the township, but I think there's one thing in this community that we generally, the majority of us agree on, which is public safety is number one, and we need to put the resources into it and to make it, make, to provide the level of service that we want. And just finally, I would add that, again, with that COVID grant money that we have, that's exactly why that money was provided to communities around the country, is to pick up, you know, costs like public safety that, you know, were increased during the COVID emergency, and we have that money, we have nearly a million dollars that we're sitting on right now. So, we could get that, that responder on the road at any time you wanted to use that money. And finally, I would just like to add that there was some comments about the communications commission being reestablished. I think that's a good idea, too. Thank you.
All set? Anybody else? Okay. Reports. Clerk O'Connor is not here tonight. Brian, did you have anything for that office? Okay, thank you. Treasurers' report. Mr. Nadeau.
Thank you. At the end of December of 2022, the township had a total of, excuse me, $17,151,000 in invested funds. The final details of the 12/31 year-end, although not the fiscal year-end, but the calendar have not been finalized at the time of this meeting. Just a reminder that winter tax bills are due February 14th, and deferments are available, ineligible residents can apply for the, for the extension from February 14th to April 30th. Forms are available online at groseal.com. As to the commissions, Commerce Park Commission, our next meeting is 2/21, February 21st, at, that's at 6 o'clock. And the next DPS, there was no DPS meeting in January, and our next meeting is February 14th at 7 o'clock. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, David. Trustees' reports. Jamison?
Good evening. I sit on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and we're continuing to work on building some consensus around the Belleville connector. We'll have a meeting with the Recreation Commission in the near future about it.
Bellevue, maybe?
Bellevue. Hold on. Bellevue. You know what, we're going to put one on Belleville, whether you want it or not, so. And actually, I was out walking the dogs with my wife down, down the Meridian Bike Trail last night, just appreciating the nice repairs they did on that over the summer, so it still looks great, there's no cracks because of the ice. So they're doing a good job. The zoning board of appeals will meet this month, and that will be this Thursday? No, actually, I'm sorry, it'll be tomorrow. And then, I know we're heading towards the new budget in April, so I'm looking forward to the budget reconciliation. The only other things is, and I didn't bring this point up earlier during our study session, but hybrid meetings are future pandemic proof. So, yeah, hopefully, we can eventually go in that direction as our technology allows. And then, I know the cell tower sale came off the agenda, but some of the comments made by the public reminded me that I am not a telecommunications expert. I know very little about cell towers and land. So at a minimum, it may be worth considering establishing even a temporary committee or getting together some residents that are experts on those kind of things, I'm sure some live around here, that could help us try to make a good decision about this. Because I would hate for us to sell now an asset that's going to be worth, you know, substantially more in the future, or give away a capability. There's some communities that have community networks that provide internet service as part of the, you know, valuable assets and utilities that that municipality provides. And that's something we could potentially do here, and we're actually really well-positioned for it because we're a small island. We know exactly where the borders of our telecommunications assets would be, need to be. So I just think before we go forward with that, we really need to do, do our due diligence and make sure we're not putting the horse before the cart. And that concludes my comments.
Thanks, Jamison. Carl?
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I sit on Greenway's Open Space. We have identified three parcels of township-owned property that Greenway's Open Space believes may have some value to purchase from the township and have it preserved in Greenway's Open Space. We have received prices that were suggested by the township manager. Those came out last, late last week. We are going to meet and discuss the same, hoping to do that before our next meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, February 7 at 7:00 p.m. in this room. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Kyle?
I sit on the Planning Commission, which has not met since we last spoke. And, yep, but I hope we'll meet soon. I have met with Ross Cuero, our Community Development and DDA joint manager, and, yeah, there's some progress being made there, which I'm excited to move forward around master plan stuff. So that's exciting. And I hope it's okay to say, but I was grateful to be invited by Supervisor Budney to be part of a, a working group on the TPOAM contract negotiations. So I've been learning a lot through that, working with Treasurer Nadeau, and seeing our township manager Thiel and, and manager Cuero just in action. And I really want to say, when manager Thiel was appointed, I, you know, I respected him at the time, but just seeing him in action, just the way he, you know, he takes notes very diligently, sends them out right after the meeting, very knowledgeable on all the issues affecting the township, it's just been really good to see that in action. So, yeah, those are, I mean, the TPOAM contract, among other things, are some of the biggest budget items for our township, which I'm obviously just learning and prioritizing in terms of learning our budget and our processes, something I'm watching very closely. As members of the public, I hope know, the next two months are, the reason we're meeting twice monthly now is, is because budget negotiation, you know, budget stuff is coming up, and, yeah, it was complicated stuff before I was on the board, still is complicated stuff. But at the end of the day, a budget is a statement of priorities. And so folks have, you know, impact, or, you know, feelings about the budget or things that we should prioritize over others. I want to hear those things. Please, please send them to me or others. And, yeah, there's things that, those are things that I'm going to be looking, looking at as we, as we go into budgeting season, so I will, I will end there. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
Good evening. I sit on the Police Commission, and we meet third Tuesday, 7 o'clock in the boardroom here. And, Mr. Supervisor, I have no, nothing further rather to report tonight on that, nothing new.
Okay. Very good. Very good. Derek?
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor and members of the board. Just a couple of quick items. The budget process will be starting here fairly shortly, and I know the Finance Department is in the process of putting together projections as well as looking at year-end closeouts to be able to get the managers the necessary information so they can start working on their budget. But I think, as was mentioned earlier, we're going to two meetings per month, and a large part of that is because we're going to be working on the budget process diligently over the next six weeks or so. So look for a lot of information coming to you fairly shortly with regards to that. At previous meetings, I've talked about the DTE tree trimming. That's still ongoing, that still is going on and should be for about another six weeks. So they have been actually working on the north end of the island and towards the middle of the island, working their way south. So that is still ongoing. Township has been undertaking a number of drainage projects, one major one over on Island Boulevard, and then some additional work over by Ferry to clean out existing drainage ditches that haven't been maintained in quite some time. So they feed a lot of the residential areas or allow some of the residential areas to, to bleed off basically towards the canals. So we're hopeful through the DPS Commission that's going to provide some, some major improvements. And not for now necessarily, but when we get those one, two-inch rainfalls, we're always happy that we have had this work done because it ultimately pays dividends when we have those heavy rain events, and now's the time to take advantage of, of the weather to do that type of work. As trustee Kyle had mentioned, we have been working in a subgroup to review the TPOAM contract, and we plan on having a, a meeting with the board on the 30th to go over that, the results of our review, and then also some, some suggestions, and then also your input as our first negotiation date, I believe, is the 14th of February. So we'll be working on that. I believe the contract expires at the end of March, so look for that. The DPS Commission, during their last meeting, had forwarded along a roads project list to our engineers. So Rains has been working on putting together that project list for bidding purposes. So we anticipate going to bid in February and March for a spring construction project or a number of spring construction projects. We're looking at spending right around $6.5 million this upcoming spring, actually probably closer to $5.5, because we have to push a million of it off until 2024, so we have enough to do ferry after that bridge has been completed. But that is in process, and we expect to do a lot of construction this upcoming summer to roads, so that is something that we've been working on diligently, and just wanted the residents to know. I know on your most recent tax bill, you, you paid for that millage, and we are putting your money onto the roads this upcoming construction season, so. And then last, as was mentioned earlier, Congresswoman Dingell had toured along with a number of the Township Board representatives, as well as myself, and members of the operating crew over at the wastewater treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant, I believe, last Tuesday or Thursday, somewhere around there. And part of that was so that she could view the plant, and also we could show to her where the money was going for the grant that we had received. So there was an article in the newspaper that kind of addressed what we received and how it was going to be applied, so hopefully residents have had the opportunity to review that because it's a significant investment in our community, and we're very appreciative to the congressman for her support in that project. So with that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Derek. Appreciate it. As Derek mentioned, we're, we're going through our TPOAM contract negotiations. We will be having the, the meeting next Monday, the 30th. It is a closed session because we are trying to determine what exactly we want to negotiate in that contract. So that'll be taking place next Monday. Couple of, couple of things that were mentioned tonight. Jamison, the budget item will be done. I talked to Ann today. We'll be doing that in March, so we will cover that. When Kathy was up, she mentioned fire calls. The firemen are not called individually. A tone goes out, they all get it at the same time, and they press a button to respond so they, they can see who's responding to it and who isn't. It's a little more instantaneous than making a call and having them say yes or no and moving to the next one. So that needed to be, needed to be corrected. And there was also a mention of the Communications Commission being disbanded at the time of some, some legal cost or something. I, I happened to be around at the time that that took place, and there was, there was no dollar issues involved in that, in that decision. I mean, it didn't revolve around that, so it was, it was done for other reasons. And cell tower, this is something that the board voted on to go forward with, to, to put forth a selling. We've been going around because I, I've, I've been insisting on it, as clean a contract as possible, and we haven't been getting it. That's what the holdup has been. When we do get that and this does come on, we will have a study session with, with the attorney that's handling it to go over your questions that you might have regarding it and going over why, you know, we believe now's the time to do that. So that'll be coming in the future. We always think that cell tower's going to make it to the next meeting, and then something always comes up, but we're not going to put, we're not going to be voting on a bad contract. I'm not going to do that, so. That is all I have tonight. So with that, Joe?